At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of Alexander County Board of Education of Tuesday, July 20, 2021, meeting to order. And as usual, I will, I'll open with a moment of silence, but I'll have to say this is the toughest one that I've done as a, as a board member. Typically, I know what to say, and, and I don't tonight. Lost a very good friend, a very strong leader in the community. Just, he and I have had a very good relationship for a long time. We could talk about anything, and, and by the time we were done, we typically had all the world's problems solved. But then the next day, they were right back. So, but been a tough day for all of us, a tough couple of days for all of us. And I'm going to, just to read a little piece about Dr. Peel, and then we'll just have a moment of silence, if you would please. "We begin tonight's Board of Education meeting with great sadness in our hearts as we extend condolences to the family of Dr. Jeff Peel, wife Renee, and daughters Savannah and Bailey, and son Elijah. Renee currently serves as the Attendance Counselor at Alexander Central High School, and Elijah is a rising senior. Dr. Peel served as the Associate Superintendent at Alexander County Schools from 2006 to 2015, and as the Interim Superintendent in 2012. As Associate Superintendent, he directly supervised several areas, but his reach extended across the school system and the county with his optimistic attitude. He was often heard saying, 'It's a great day to be in Alexander County.'" His career in education spanned well over 30 years. He was a graduate of West Liberty State College in Ohio and Gardner-Webb University in Bowling Springs. He obtained his master's degree in school administration and his doctorate in educational leadership from Gardner-Webb University, and he later served as adjunct professor for the university, guiding future educational leaders. Dr. Peel enriched the lives of others through various acts of service in his church and community. He served as a county commissioner and was involved in Habitat for Humanity, United Way, Red Cross, Partnership for Children, Veterans Committee, and many others. Over the years, Dr. Peel has also served as a deacon and Sunday School teacher, Sunday School Director on many committees at the churches he's attended. Most recently, he served at Millersville Baptist Church, where he was the principal of the Christian Academy. One of Dr. Peel's great loves was coaching. He successfully coached football, wrestling, golf, tennis, and track over, over several years. Above all of this, Dr. Peel's love of his family and his Savior was his greatest commitment. Dr. Peel impacted the lives of many inside and outside the school system, and he'll be greatly missed. And I, I want to add another one thought, as that I've said many times about Dr. Peel, is that I know a lot of people that talk the talk, but he always walked the walk. And I admired him for that. And any other board members like to add any before we have a moment of silence, please?
I'd like to send my condolences to his family. Had the opportunity to work in his system when he was Assistant Superintendent. And when I decided to make a career change, he was a very positive, influential individual to me. I, I honestly was making a change, I was a little bit scared. And he was one of the first people I seen when I moved into the new role, and he was always very supportive. And it wasn't just me, it was every employee that he had the opportunity to work with. And the school system and our county are a better place because of Dr. Jeff Peel. And I send my condolences to his wife and kids and grandkids, and they will be in my thoughts and prayers.
Anyone else? Okay, if you will, please join me in just a moment of silence. At this time, I'll recognize Matt Cooksey for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand with me.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cooksey. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Matt Cooksey.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Okay, and we do have one person signed up for public comment. And before we start public comment, I'll read the rules pertaining to that. Each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his/her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in the order of which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or a school employee will be called for the ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such marks, remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. The public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussion between speakers and members of the audiences will not be allowed. Speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, items which are closed session matters, including, but not limited to, the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115(c)(321) and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students' and employees' records. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. And we have one speaker signed up, Mr. Bill Rokap, is that correct? Okay, all right, if you will, please address the board.
Thank you. Sorry. I'll step back a little bit. Thank you for displaying the American flag. The United States' flag, sometimes referred to as Old Glory, is the symbol of our great country, the United States of America. The flag and its freedom it represents are meaningful to Americans. Freedom comes at a great cost, that of blood, which is represented by the red stripes. Evidence this cost could be the flag-draped coffins of veterans returning from fighting communists in Vietnam. What the American flag stands for is freedom, is hope, to live our lives peaceably. The value of America's freedoms are demonstrated by people not honoring our borders, our laws, entering the U.S. illegally. These illegal aliens are fleeing the tyranny of their home countries. Freedom is not free. Freedom requires participation, education, and dedication. Freedom can easily be lost. A quote from Ben Franklin when asked about our new government, a quote, "A republic if you can keep it," close quote. Dr. Franklin was acknowledging that freedoms are rare, unique, and have, and may have a tenuous existence. The Declaration of Independence begins, when in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth a separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitles them. And we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The Constitution of the United States begins, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." Both of these documents that you can see today clearly recognize and state the very existence of nature's God, their Creator, and our Lord. This is the same mentioned in the Pledge of Allegiance, one nation under God. The same printed on our currency, "In God we trust." The truth is, America was founded as a godly nation, suggesting that this God has richly blessed this nation. America has become the strongest, most prosperous nation in the history of the world and in the shortest period of time.
Mr. Rokap, that's, the time has already elapsed, and I've allowed you some leniency there, and we appreciate your remarks. And public comment is over at this time, but if I remember correctly, I think you're a veteran, correct? Yes, and we very much appreciate your service, very much. Thank you. All right, moving along. Board members, you've had a opportunity to review the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Okay. All right, now we're up to reports, and I'll recognize Mr. Chris Campbell, Maintenance Director of Alexander County Schools.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum, board members, and Dr. Hefner. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak about the Maintenance Department and the renovations that we have been doing. We've been busy over the last year. Just, I always like to share a little bit about my crew. We have a six-member crew. Five of them are alumni of Alexander County Schools. Between the six of them, they have 105 years' experience with Alexander County Schools, which to me is just impressive. Maintenance requests this year, from July 20th of last year till July 20th of this year, we had 1,305 maintenance requests. We have fulfilled all but 72 of those. That's a 94.5% completion rate. That's 205.5 completed work orders per employee, and some of those work orders take seven, eight days. So it's not like we get a HVAC request in that we can come in, fix it that same day. A lot of them we can, but some of them we have to order parts, and over the last year, parts have been hard to come by with shipping and everything else, so that's impressive to me. I have a great crew of guys. So next, I want to share with you the Board of Education building. I'm going to share with some pictures here from before we did the renovations. And she's just, they're going to play it as a slideshow so you can see, and I'll try to explain them as we go through them here. The little blue circle. So this is the outside roof edge of the building. You can see where we put a screwdriver through it where it was rotten and falling apart. Continuing the same picture. A lot of these are going to be the same to start with. The roof, the edge where there was no flashing, it was rotten, and we actually had termite damage there. That's where someone had hit the gutter, I don't know how long ago. This is inside the building, in the office, right above someone's desk where the ceiling was not primed, and it actually fell right beside of someone that was sitting at their desk. This was throughout the whole building. More of the, we're on the other side of the building now with the rotten wood. Roof had hail damage, wind damage, a lot of shingles were missing. We re-roofed the whole building. That's just where we had to replace the sheet rock, and we'll see why in the next picture. So, once we began construction, we removed the wallpaper, and in every classroom, if you'll see, or every office, I'm used to saying classrooms, in every office behind the wallpaper was mold. So this was every office in the, the renovation was just the old part of central office, not the new part in the back. So every single office in the front part of the building, this is, had mold behind the wallpaper. Part of the issue with the mold is, the parking lot was sloped from the road to the building, there was a four-inch slope toward the building. So all the water that come in the driveway and the parking lot went straight into the building, through the rooms. I have some more pictures in here as we get further, but you can just see we're in every office, that's the entryway to the building. This is just the exterior. So that's it for those pictures. And then this is the after. So we sealed the cracks and stuff in the building and painted the building. The new awning in the middle for, which was actually part of the handicap access for the building, is to give them a shelter and a big enough entry to get in. I did not like in that picture. Look at that. The new sign, that's not perpendicular, it's not parallel with the road, it's perpendicular to the road. We're waiting, that's the last part of this project, is the metal and the sign there in powder coating right now. We were hoping to get it done today, but it didn't make it. The office, we removed all the wallpaper and put new sheet rock throughout the whole building, new lighting. New floor where the carpet had been flooded for so many times, it was still left there, they just dried it out and left it. There was mold in the carpet, too. And so that's it for the inside of the central office building. And as I said, that project is completed with the exception of the sign, and maybe one final walkthrough with the contractor to just nitpick and figure out if there's anything else we did. Sugarloaf Cafeteria, before we proceed with the pictures here, it is, as of today, the cafeteria project, same thing, we have, we have to do a walkthrough list and just go through and make sure everything is done, but as of today, they could move back in and start using the cafeteria. It is completed. We have, we're waiting on Duke Power to move a light pole outside so we can do some landscaping and clean up on the outside, but the cafeteria project is completed with a few exceptions here and there. So there's the old freezer and, and cooler, the old kitchen with the old appliances. There are a lot of these pictures are going to be that right through here. That, hold up right there. If you'll look, that's where the cafeteria manager's office was. She had a desk unlocked, so if she had to count money, she had to lock the entire cafeteria so no one could go in because she's supposed to count the money behind closed doors. So that was her original office. So this is just installation, pictures of the, the new freezer and cooler. We now have a walkthrough refrigerator into a freezer, and that's it with the drive-in on it. New ceiling, we put a drop ceiling, which really did cut down on the noise. We all said it when we walked through there, we put a drop ceiling in, it would reduce the noise level in the cafeteria, and it worked. New flooring, new windows, new sink with air conditioning in the cafeteria. That is the new cafeteria manager's office, which is where the old cooler used to be, or freezer. New double oven, new steamer, the new cafeteria seating area with the new windows. And once again, that's a new picture of the sink back there. The, you can see the warming station, the ceiling in there, the lights in there, they can actually see in the cafeteria now. And we put a new exterior door. Little close-up of it. And the cafeteria, so we did not take up any more space in the cafeteria when we did this, because we moved the cafeteria manager's office outside. So now they have more space in the kitchen, more space in the freezer, we put a bigger freezer, bigger cooler. Cafeteria manager has her own office now that has a locking door, so she can go in and lock and count money. So as always, I'd just like to give, the custodians have worked hard over the last year since COVID. I know, because I've been in charge of getting them supplies and making sure that the supplies are there, and our custodians have just, they have busted it. Since March the 15th of last year, 13th of last year, they have been ongoing, and this summer is throwing a kink in that with them because they have had summer, the summer learning program, is that what it's called? And so since school has been out, kids have pretty much been in their buildings, so they've had to work around those, and they're, the schools are looking great. They're doing a great job, so I always like to give them a shout-out because they work extremely hard. Any questions?
Actually, I have a comment, Chris. It's funny, because we always hear the negative stuff, and when we started the renovation of the central office, I got to hear it from my tennis crowd. If y'all don't know, I play tennis out on the courts right next to it a lot. And I got to hear a lot of negative, why are you spending the money, that kind of stuff. And it was funny, when you finished the project, one day, one of them looked over and he said, "Thank you." And I said, "What?" And he said, "Thank you for that project over there. We finally have a building we can be proud of." And all the rest joined in and affirmed that with him. So it was funny that the project spoke for itself in the end. So I'm glad we did it, and I'm sorry that people didn't always perceive the need, but it needed to be done, and it's, and the result was fantastic. So thank you.
It looks good, both projects. Thank you.
Very nice. I, I just did it. I just handled it. There was a lot of other people that was involved that, a long time before I was here, but it all needed to be done. As a matter, I just like to say, most of the time, I hear it, when I go out into the community, too, I hear it, "Why are you doing this, and why are you doing that?" And I would just, there's nobody that works in the school system that's going to do something just to waste money. Most of the stuff needs to be done, and that goes for all of y'all. I've, I've learned that from working with y'all, that you're not going to do anything just because it makes it look better, you're going to do it because it needs to be done, and it's for the better of the kids and the staff. So thank y'all, too.
Thank you for what you do. That crew is greatly diminished, if people don't believe that. In 1996, I think there was 10 full-time employees in that department. So if somebody wonders, well, you know, are you overstaffed? You're definitely understaffed, because we haven't really reduced our square footage. And those guys need to be commended. Got a lot, got a lot of knowledge in that department.
And they never complain. They, they show up and do, do what they need to do and get it done, so I couldn't be prouder.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Jessica Anderson, Director of Accountability for Testing Misadministration Report for Spring of 2021.
Good evening. That report is not as dire as it sounds. We actually didn't have any last year due to COVID. The reporting requirement was waived. And then the first year I was here, we did not have any. So let me tell you what we had. So during the 2020 and 2021 school year, we had eight reported testing irregularities, seven of which were due to students getting sick during the test. So those are required reports. And then one of the eight was, or the final one that brings us to eight, was due to a statewide technical issue in online testing, and the student was unable to log back in. So it was a statewide issue, but it was still a regularity for us. So that sums up our testing irregularities for last year.
A nosebleed would constitute a missed test, wouldn't it?
It would, especially if the nosebleed continued.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We still are accountable for those materials, however.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, do we have any committee reports? All right, recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Schrum. New teacher orientation is scheduled to kick off on Monday, August 9, at 8:30 at the Board of Education. All board members are always invited to attend, but the chairman is always asked to offer a brief welcome to the group. I think that that's my request this evening, Chairman Schrum, to see if you would just welcome the group. If you would like to meet the new teachers to Alexander County, please mark your calendars to attend that first session, like I said, beginning at 8:30 on August 9. Also, opening session is scheduled for the school system. It's scheduled on Wednesday, August 18, from 9 until 11 here at this auditorium. Please make plans to attend. This is a very important event, and it pretty much sets the tone for the new school year. And this year's theme of the opening session will be transitioning from a pandemic to a pandemic. The annual leadership retreat for all school and central office leaders is scheduled for next week. That's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at Appalachian State University. If you need me or any of the system's leaders during this time, the best way to reach us would be through text or emails. In the right college of education, sometimes the phone signal is not that great, so probably, I don't know that phone calls would go through. So that's just an FYI. A draft of the meeting dates for the 2021-2022 school year is attached in this agenda. I would ask that you look at the dates and let me know if you have any major conflicts by tomorrow. If not, I'm going to provide a hard copy to each of you and the school system's leaders next week. And those meeting dates are for board meetings, principal meetings, and at this point, we don't have any curriculum meetings on the schedule, but we always leave a column for those dates as well. But it's just so that everybody knows to avoid those dates in planning other activities. I wanted to share some good news. Actually, the next two bullets are good news bullets. One of our art teachers at ACHS, Samantha Stravy, has been awarded a $2,000 Unsung Hero Grant for the art department. This is the first half of a grant that could also bring in an additional $5,000, $10,000, or $25,000 award. We're very excited and proud of Ms. Stravy for all she brings to ACHS, and I just want to say congratulations, Samantha. Mr. Palmer, will you make sure that she knows that, that I shared that with the board tonight? Also, Alexander Central's Nathan Robinson was recognized by the NC Athletic Directors Association as an Athletic Director of Excellence, and this happened as recent as yesterday. Mr. Robinson will be live on B-86 radio tomorrow morning at 7:45 to talk about the upcoming 2021 athletic season, and he will explain the changes in ticket purchasing for Cougar Athletics. So I would ask that you radio in tomorrow at 7:45 to hear all about it from Nathan Robinson. And then, board members and staff are being asked a lot about a mask mandate for the upcoming school year. I wanted to just say publicly that the Department of Health and Human Services for the state will be releasing a revised toolkit at some point this week. I have been looking for it all day yesterday and today, but still no toolkit. And a decision about masks will not be made until that document is released and discussed. I was notified today that we have two student cases of COVID in our summer school program. And so for folks who think that COVID does not exist any longer, that is not true. We have two student cases as of today. So I would open it to questions from the school board.
I'd like to ask, or just get you to state, I keep getting asked, are we going to school five days a week? And I let people know that we passed a calendar a few months ago with five-day, four-week schools.
And it has five days every week unless there's a holiday or a teacher workday. You're exactly right.
That seems to be the burning question, and I tell them that, you know, go look at the documents that we passed a five-day-a-week calendar, basically, a normal school calendar.
That is correct.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions or, or statements that need to be made at this time?
I guess going on the calendar, the only thing that would change that is if there's a directive from the governor that comes out. So just, if that gets changed, it's not us.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, in unfinished business, I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, the Chief Financial Officer, for second reading of policy revisions.
Okay, we have six policies up that are up for second reading tonight. I receive no comments on these policy and would ask for approval on second reading.
Okay, board members, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for us to approve the... Do I have a motion for us to approve the policy revisions?
Same move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor of accepting the policy revisions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Okay, and if you will, carry on with first readings.
We have six, an additional six policies up for first reading tonight, and I will ask for feedback and bring those back next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I'll recognize Jessica Anderson again, Director of Accountability, for the SHLT plan and mental health training plan. I was careful.
Thank you. So the SHLT III was approved in June of 2020, and now it's Session Law 2020-7. It's an act that requires the State Board of Education to adopt a school-based mental health policy, and then in turn to require K-12 school units to adopt and implement a school-based mental health plan that includes mental health training and a suicide risk protocol. Furthermore, the two components that are, I guess the two key components of the plan are a school mental health improvement plan and a training plan. So the improvement plan for social, emotional learning and school mental health is the requirement of school districts to adopt and implement a plan for promoting student mental health and well-being, for assessing and improving upon the effectiveness of supports for the mental and social, emotional health and substance use needs of its students and staff. The training plan is to include legislative trainings on the topic of youth mental health, suicide prevention, substance abuse, teen dating violence, child sexual abuse prevention, and human sex trafficking prevention. Within all of those training topics, the definitions must be addressed, national and state statistics, myths and facts must be analyzed and debunked, there must be risk factors, protective factors, how to respond to warning signs, and resources in these trainings. Specifically, within child sexual abuse and sex trafficking prevention, there have to be best practices from the field of prevention. There has to be instruction on identifying the grooming process of sexual predators, the warning signs of sexual abuse and sex trafficking, and how to intervene when sexual abuse or sex trafficking is suspected or disclosed, and our legal responsibilities as school personnel for reporting and the available resources for assistance. So there were some specific items for the child sexual abuse and sex trafficking prevention staff training, but also every other training, the first list I went through, including definitions and myths and so on and so forth, is required to be in all of the training topics. So for example, youth mental health training, we must address all of the bulleted items that are required under youth mental health. Under the next one, substance abuse, again, all of the bulleted items must be addressed. It is a requirement of six hours for all staff that work with students in this coming year. The plan that we have developed has six hours and six minutes of training required for all staff. In turn, our Student Support Services staff will have further training. They're required to have an extra layer on each content area. They will go into the schools and assist administrators and their own teachers in a further depth and breadth of knowledge on the content. So that is the training plan. The next is the implementation plan on how we're going to shore up what we currently have and expand supports for students and staff. And so we've done that in almost a linear fashion from year to year about what we need to put in place first and then what can be built from it. Every year, we will resubmit, so it is an editable document in the sense that if we don't progress as far as we need to, or we need to go back and relearn or develop before moving forward, we can do that annually. It is required to have board approval for submission in September.
So are you asking for board approval tonight?
Yes, please. May I have the board approve it?
Okay.
Or any questions?
Well, I have a question. All this training, is this before school starts?
No, ma'am. It is, thank you for asking. No, it is throughout the school year. We've tried to divide it up by months, so it's in more palatable pieces, so we can devote the time and attention.
Bridget, on the slide, on the presentation in there, do you see where we had training in 20, it says training 21, 22, and up? That's what is planned, and even down to training in 22, 23, and beyond.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay. All right.
Is that training going to take the place of other professional development? Or I get that it's going to take place in. Is it going to be stacked on top of it, or are we going to substitute that for some previous PD?
So there is some that we can substitute. For example, we are required two hours of human sex trafficking and child abuse prevention every two years. So our training in this SHLT plan will address that, so we won't have to address it separately. But much of it is new content.
My question was just, you know, in regards, are we going to stack more on our teachers?
I, I.
That's where I was coming from.
I agree. Yes, I see what you're saying. So yes, this is six additional hours to what we typically request. The following year, it is only a two, excuse me, a two-hour required training for continuing staff. New staff will still require the six hours of training.
Now, on this chart, it says three hours, 18 minutes.
That is because, that's a great question, Dr. Hefner, a great point. That is because regardless of the two-hour limit, you still are required to address all the bullets required in training for each topic. And that, at this time, is as minimal as we could cut it.
But two hours was the minimum in the law that was written?
Correct.
As far as the amount of time for follow-up training?
Correct.
But the modules that we have chosen will total three hours, 18 minutes.
Correct.
Okay. Did that make sense, board members?
And our modules are very similar to the other 115 school districts.
I think Ms. Anderson needs to answer that.
Certainly.
Because I do know that resources have been provided to us, but I do know that there is some flexibility from system to system as far as what is chosen for the training materials. Would you speak to that?
It would be my pleasure. So our mental health teams in NCDPI, like IAVs, MTSS, they have developed some 60-minute to 90-minute training sessions that we may use, and we are actually using two of them in two of the months for topics at 60 minutes each. However, those are only four topics. So two more topics are unaddressed from the State Department of Public Instruction. So we have gone to our Safe Schools Vector System that typically provides our bloodborne pathogens, and I can't say that that is exactly what every district is doing, but when we benchmark to see what others will be doing for some of these gap areas, those are, it's a, not common, but others are also using our vector system.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
But these requirements, the six hours and two hours and those things, that's statewide. It's state law.
Oh, yes.
That correct? Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, board members, you've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve the SHLT plan and mental health training plan as presented?
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Gordon Palmer, the Principal of ACHS, for request for attendance waiver for athletic eligibility per Board of Education Policy Number 3620, Section B.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum, Dr. Hefner, members of the board. So the athletic, North Carolina Athletic Association, several years ago, took out a requirement for attendance hours. The Alexander County Board of Education decided to keep that as a policy for our athletics to remain eligible for athletics. And I agree with that. I think we should have an attendance policy for our student athletes. It's something that holds us above par across the state for our student athletes, that we value their education, and we put student before student athlete. With that being said, this past year, attendance was very different than it was any other year. And I feel that it is in the best interest of our students to waive the attendance policy of 85% attendance, given a lot of students had difficulty signing in for their attendance while they were not here. And there was a multitude of reasons why attendance had varied throughout the course of last school year. When I looked at the policy today, I thought that maybe there was a chance that I could, as the principal, waive it. Upon looking at the policy, I felt like it was too far of a stretch for me alone to waive this policy. The last thing that I would like to have happen is one of our student athletes participated at a high level on a team, and then another membership school come back and say, "This player is ineligible due to not the state's policy, but your own board policy." So I would like to recommend that, as a board, we agree to waive this policy for this school year based on a hybrid COVID year for our student athletes, not to penalize them, but also, in the event that it is ever called into question, we'll have it on record here as a board in open session meetings to show that this is how we amended the policy just for this year, given a hybrid COVID year. And I'd take any questions?
I guess to avoid, looking as we took action in retro, there's no way we could have known what those numbers were going to be prior to that. You see what I'm saying as far as taking action after we?
Right.
Know what the amounts are, but, you know, really, we don't know it's an issue until we know those numbers.
We started looking at some of the students' eligibility because we have tryouts starting August 2nd. So when I started looking at some of our student athletes, they were perfectly eligible academically, and then their attendance had fallen below the 85%. So we have seen those students, several students that would not be eligible, that are perfectly eligible academically, but we wouldn't have known about this policy until the end of the school year where we could look at their attendance records, as you mentioned. So we wouldn't have known this until now, and we were hoping to do something prior to the beginning of the season.
Because the grades and the attendance is from the previous semester. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
That's the eligibility coming from the previous?
Yep. There's two things in play there. They have to have passed three out of four courses the previous semester, and they also have to be promoted to the next grade level. So if a student does not obtain those academic standards, then they will still be ineligible, and that is based on our policy and also the state policy.
All right. Thank you.
And do you see at the end of this upcoming year, if we have a normal year as expected that we go back to business as usual?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify something. So this is going back to last year, because I know they go back, I guess fall goes back to spring semester attendance and stuff? Is that, okay. So a kid that got put into a quarantine situation just because of protocols and guidelines from our state, those days, I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. It's not that a student athlete just chose not to come. Some of them couldn't because of 10-day, 14-day quarantine periods.
It could be a multitude of reasons, yes. It could be, for a quarantine scenario, it would most likely be quarantine and even hospitalization.
Right. But there's no, that's why I just want to clarify, there's no asterisk there that says, "Well, this student missed these days because of that." It's all one rolling number for that student.
Yes.
More or less.
Yes. If they're not present, and we had an added layer this year of present, remote in addition to.
Any other questions?
Just for clarity's sake, we're saying to waive it for the 21-22 school year.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to waive it for the entire year, the first semester?
I would, I would feel comfortable doing it for the entire year, just to make sure that any variables at play don't impact our students negatively.
You feel we should add the 2021 school year to the actual request so that it doesn't look open-ended?
Yes, that would be absolutely fine, in my opinion.
And that could be captured in the minutes also, is that that is the expectation?
And this is.
We're doing it for the upcoming school year, and then it goes automatically back to normal?
And this is totally an LEA decision that the state had taken out of effect from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. There are several school districts that do not have any attendance policy whatsoever across the state, and I do value this, but I feel like, given our hybrid COVID year, that we waive it for this one year, then I'd feel good about protecting our students.
Do we need to put language in the minutes where it's clear that children impacted by the quarantine or the pandemic, in essence, this is a reach back? This is retroactive because the absences are here and the action is here.
Correct.
So.
Their eligibility for the 21-22 school year is based on the previous, the previous year. So I think if we just state that, for the 21-22 school year, we are waiving the attendance policy for our student athletes to be eligible as a local decision, I think that would suffice.
And if you noticed, in the first reading of the policies that Ms. Mahaffey shared this evening, Policy 3620 is up for revisions. So we will be gathering Mr. Palmer's input again and other school system leaders to keep that attendance piece in the policy moving forward.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Board members, you've heard the recommendation. I'm asking for approval of the ACHS request for attendance waiver for athletic eligibility per Board of Education Policy Number 3620, Section B, for the school year 2021-2022. Do I have a motion?
To approve as presented?
I make the motion.
I think Mr. Odom made the motion.
That's fine. I'll second it. How's that?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking care of our students.
And please make sure that Mr. Robinson knows that we recognized him tonight also.
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, now the board will enter into closed session to discuss personnel per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. Need a motion?
Same move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.